Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me in the back? It keeps going down. Welcome. I appreciate you coming. My name is Chad Blaise. I'm the Director of Public Works for City of Norco. I manage the trash contract for the City of Norco. Bill, we can have a front seat right here if you like.
I'll go back here.
No, but I really want you here. Okay. I'll put it back. I just use my regular voice. That'd be better. All right. Oh, that's all right. Our hero. Good job. Again, welcome. Appreciate you coming to this community meeting. This was a meeting that was requested by Waste Management. As you probably already were aware, the city approved a new contract with Waste Management in March. That agreement is now done and it will be a 10-year agreement. What we want to do as part of that process is explain the things that are changing in the agreement. Primarily, the biggest things is going to be the customer service and the billing are going to be done by Waste Management directly. So you will no longer see a trash bill or a component in your bill. And so this is part of that process. We wanted to make sure when the new contract goes into effect in July, on July 1, that you have as much information as you can to understand the new services that are going to be done, how it's going to be implemented by Waste Management. So today's meeting was a request from Waste Management to talk to you directly about how things are going to change, the way they're going to conduct that, and answer any questions you may have regarding that change in those services and how they're going to be implemented. So Glenda Chavez from Waste Management is here. She's going to give you a nice presentation. The way we're going to do this is that if you have questions that you'd like to have answered, there should be pieces of paper on your chair. If you need some, raise your hand, but we'd prefer if you write your questions down on that paper and then we will bring those forward and then we'll review those pieces of paper and answer your questions one by one and to review that. So I think the way we have a little more controlled process as we get your information in. So if you have questions, you already know, you can always bring those forward or staff will help grab them. You just raise your hand, we'll grab them from you. If you want to wait towards the end and you want to hand it then, certainly write down your question on that little card and we'll go from there. But that's generally how the process is going to be, but we're here to provide as much as information as you can regarding the service that's being provided to you and will be provided to you effective July 1 and the different programs and the new rates. And again, I'd like to highlight, very excited at the fact that the new rates because they, almost most of them went down, not 100%, but almost all of them went down, especially the residential, so that was really huge. I haven't seen that in my history of doing business in public service where rates went down. So that's an incredible accomplishment, so I really appreciate that. But with that, I'm going to have Glenda start and then after the presentation's done, we'll answer all your questions. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. There. Could you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Let me move this because I can't see my notes. I know, it's probably like a little head in a podium. Yeah. Well, that's a great start. Yeah. And let me, this is on, right? Okay, cool. Well, welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight to discuss the new franchise agreement that goes into effect July 1 of this year. But before I start, for those of you who, well, don't know me, my primary role is to be the city liaison. I'm the WM City Liaison and accompanying me tonight is our WM team. I won't introduce them all, but I do appreciate that they're here today. Please be, feel free to, after, if you still have questions, they are more than happy to answer them. So with that, let me start. The new franchise agreement, what we wanted is that the new franchise agreement holds on to our long-term partnership with the city and it also provides new and enhanced services and programs, ensuring that they are lasting benefits for the community to enjoy. I was kind of hoping I could see the powerpoint, so. Some of the things that I will be discussing in the presentation is rate reductions. Like Chad said, there are, you're going to see a reduction in your residential rate. Commercial customers are also going to have some reductions and manure rates also have been reduced for cart service. So one of the things that everyone talks about is manure service, obviously. We're very happy that we were able to provide you with free manure scout service. So if you are a scout, manure scout service customer, that effective July 1 will be free. Also, we have, we do offer a reduced rate for the manure 96-gallon cart. We have other benefits which we, well, you know, obviously we stuck to our Monday service. One of the things that this contract needed was SB 1383 language and one of them is that we are guaranteeing that the SB 1383 program compliance will be there. We do offer free second recycle and organic carts. So you'll pay for your first one, but the second one will be free and I'll provide more information later on on the slides. Another thing that is added to this contract that isn't in our current contract is that we will be overseeing the street sweeping for the city, so that is included in this franchise agreement, along with storm drain cleaning. And as presented here, you'll see our SB 1383 residential carts that you will be getting and I'll discuss that a little bit further. We are doing the distribution of the new carts in a five-year phased-in, so depending on where you live, I'll show a map that will let you know what year you will be getting new carts. We are also offering residents food waste pails and home composting bins. Obviously, for us, being part of the community is very important and we're very excited to be able to introduce two new programs, which is Chickens for Green Norco and scholarships for Norco students only. So more information will be provided on those, but we are excited that those additional programs will benefit the community. We have, obviously, we continue, we will continue to provide our two annual community cleanups. Currently, the city pays for the document shredding, however, moving forward, that will be a cost that we would cover. So you will still be able to go to the community cleanup and do your shredding, however, it would all be on our dime. And we will also be introducing compost giveaways, a compost giveaway event, so please stay tuned for that. So what's new and what has been enhanced? Let's start with residential service. Like I mentioned earlier, the residential rate has been reduced substantially. If you have your guide there, you can see the rate. It's going to be $33.41. Currently, it's $37.51, so that's $4.10 less a month. With that, you get to request, it's upon request, if you need an additional recycle cart or an additional organics cart, you just simply need to let us know and we will deliver that. After the, after the third, the third cart, if you do need a third recycle or a third organics, that will come at a cost, but your first two are free if needed. Again, like I mentioned, in the picture in here, we have our SB 1383 compliance carts that are going to be phased in in five years. We still continue to have the bulky item pickup program. You still have three free every year. You get to do three bulky items per pickup. What's new is that in addition, obviously, right now you could do e-waste, but universal waste is being introduced as part of the bulky item pickup. That would be your batteries, so if you, when you call us and let us know that you want to schedule a bulky and you have batteries, then we'll put that in, in the ticket and then we'll pick those up as well. So you don't have to go, I think right now our program is you go to City Hall, but if you have a good quantity of them, you could just include them in your bulky item pickup. Or if you don't have large items, you could put up to 10 32-gallon bags per bulky item pickup request. So, you know, sometimes we have parties or something and we exceed the capacity of our carts, just let us know that you're scheduling a bulky item pickup and that there will be bags and we will take care of that. Just a reminder, all the, we would do, we do want you to give us at least 48 hours ahead of time to, so that we could plan your bulky item requests. So if you have, obviously here it's Monday service, if you could let us know by, you know, like Wednesday evening at least, to that we could schedule that. And all items are to be placed on the curb. I know sometimes we put them on the driveway, but we do ask that you place them on the curb. That is because we've had instances where people put items on the curb and if we take them, they say, hey, you're not supposed to take it. So you placing it out on the curb is an indicator to us that that is, those are the items that we need to remove. And that's really also one of the reasons why when you call or schedule a bulky item pickup, we ask you, what are you putting out there so we know what is, what it is that we need to remove. Currently, we do have a Sharps program, however, in this new contract, we are also having a special program for senior residents. If you're a resident and you're not a senior, you get one Sharps container per year. What it is, it's a buy-back program, so like it's a program where you call us, we deliver you a Sharps container. Please keep the box that it comes with, that it comes in, so that you can put the container back in there, there's instructions, and mail it out back, back to us. And so that way you don't have to leave your home, you just fill it up, put it in the box and put it in as a normal mail package, so. However, so we are happy to say that senior residents do get two Sharps containers per year. So in addition to the one, they get an extra one. Holiday tree collection program, obviously that's not a new program, but we are happy to say that this, this contract does add another week. I know some of us take a little longer to take down that tree, so we are giving an extra week. So after December 26, you hit three, three weeks to take it out. And after that, if you do end up taking it out after the third week, we will pick it up, but it will be counted as one of the bulky item pickups. The new program that we have is a move-in-out collection service. We do offer, for new accounts, within the first three months that you open your account, you have the opportunity to put out, you know, when we move, we have a lot of cardboard boxes that don't necessarily always fit in a cart, so you have an opportunity to call us and say, hey, I'm going to participate in this move-in-out program and I have some boxes. So you just let us know and you place them out in the curb next to your recycle cart. We do ask that you kind of flatten them and that you put some twine or something because Norco is windy and so we don't want them to be flying across the street or anything like that, so. But it is only for recyclable items that we utilize when we move, so paper, like newspaper and cardboard boxes. Backyard service is a service that we continue to offer in this new agreement. This is offered for those residents who are, you know, are not able to take out their carts themselves and they don't have any else, anyone else in their household who could help them. So if you know of someone who lives alone and you help them out by taking out their carts on Monday, there is this program that you could recommend to them. They have to call us and let us know and, and we will take down their information and mark their account if they're, you know, if they meet the requirements. And then what we do is we set up a visit where one of our route managers goes out and with the customers, you know, we, we pick a spot that is convenient for the resident and for us to collect and bring out the carts and put them back. Obviously, we can't go back in the backyard, so we want to have it in a location that's accessible to us, but it's also accessible to the residents, so. Again, the food waste pails are, they are going to be given every year and they are upon request, so if you need one, just let us know. The goal for the kitchen, the food pails is to help you participate in the organics program. They allow you to carry the material to your organic cart, so it is meant to be used as a tool to participate. And we are happy to provide also home compost bins. I know a lot of you have, you know, your own compost and, but, you know, we will be putting out, we will, we will be offering home compost bins in, for our residents. There is 500 per year, but if you want to do your own compost, you know, that is one solution that you could do. You could contact us to get a compost bin and you could participate that way. Replacement, I know a lot of you talked a little bit about your carts, replacement and cart exchange. So if your cart needs replacement because it's, you know, has a broken lid, it has, it's, you know, cracked or whatever, please do not wait until, you know, July 1st, but, you know, we offer you a replacement every year, especially if it's lost or stolen. I know we want to get those to you. So if you have a cart that needs to be exchanged or is missing, please call us and we'll, we'll make sure you get one. But you get one replacement per year. And also, one of the things that a lot of people say, well, my recycle, my organics cart's going to be stinking or, you know, we do offer a one-time-a-year cart cleaning, which most likely will mean that we will give you a brand-new cart so that you could, you know, utilize that one if the other one is not in good condition. Manure service, we do say clean manure and I, I know how, how clean can manure be, but we do want it to just be manure only with, as you're, as some of you might have already, you're not, not familiar, we have a 96-gallon organic, I mean, manure cart and a two-yard bin. We will continue to do manure cart service on Mondays. One of the things that we want to let people know is that we offer the 196-gallon at a rate, right? However, if you feel that you want two 64-gallons in that, right there is a 64-gallon manure cart. The goal is that if you have, you know, the 96-gallon is giving you overweights and things like that, you might want to get the two 64-gallon carts as a solution and you get two for the price of the 196. Again, manure bin service is offered through a bin, two-cubic-yard commercial bin. That, obviously, that's a service that we offer Monday through Friday, so it's not just limited to Mondays. Again, free manure scout service for, for the bins, for those customers that subscribe to manure bin service. And also for those who have larger, you know, quantities of manure because they're, you know, like for example, Disney's one of them, that you need roll-off service. We do offer them at seven, seven yarders and 10-yarder roll-offs. On the big ones, it's up to you, but we do require that you have at least a minimum pool of once every, every two weeks, right? Yeah, every two weeks. So obviously, one of the things that was, that we wanted to communicate today is we are not, not unfamiliar with the cart, the manure carts being overweight. You know, we understand that, you know, we've experienced a lot of rain or, you know, horses are different, but what we wanted to communicate tonight is that we will be monitoring those overweights. And if you are a customer that continues to have that issue, let me get some water. One of the solutions is to provide you with two 64-gallon carts to replace that 196-gallon that continues to be overweight. We will be providing, we are already doing this, but just wanted to communicate in case you have not, are not aware, we are going to be placing tags on those overweight manure carts so that you are notified that the reason why your manure cart is still not serviced is because we went by, but that truck couldn't lift it. But we will let you know by putting that tag that that's what happened. We do guarantee that you will be, that we will service that overweight cart by noon of the next day, so by noon Tuesday, if not sooner. One of the things that we are implementing is, we did some modifications to our vehicles, to our trucks. We, we had the cart motor modifications, we had equipment inspections, so our regular trucks should be able to lift the manure overweight carts, however, if they can't, we're not going to risk, you know, any damage to the trucks or anything to pop out and hurt someone. So we did modify a commercial bin truck and if you could see right here, these forks, so the commercial truck has forks a little bit wider because it goes, they stab the bin. Here, the, these forks would lift up the manure cart and service it, so weight is not really an issue for these trucks. So when you get that tag, this truck is the one that's going to come by and pick it up. I do wish this list was a little longer, but these are the only holidays we have. New Year's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving and Christmas. Oh my God, I'm talking too fast probably. Really, for, for Norco customers, if, it really does impact you at the residential level if the holiday falls on a Monday, right? So if it falls on a Monday, we're going to service you on Tuesday. If you're a commercial customer, we would service you the following day. The one thing I do want to point out is that if you're a Friday customer, just obviously know that we'll be there on Saturday. So we'll never carry over any service for the Monday. We start off that next service week fresh, so we just provide service the following day. Oh, I better drink some water for this one. So SB 1383, if you haven't heard of it, I will provide you with some general information. SB 1383 is a reducing short-lived climate pollutants program, law in California that the state has executed. There's three objectives to SB 1383. The first one is to reduce the short-lived climate pollutants by reducing the amount of organic waste that is in the landfills. According to, this is a CalRecycle statistic, according to them, there was 24 million tons of organic waste that went into the landfills in 2018. So the goal is to eliminate all this, that, at least try to reduce this amount from going to the landfills. One of the ways, obviously, it's diversion and also to provide, to have established edible food recovery programs so that people who need food can utilize it. It's estimated that California throws away more than six million tons of food per year and that creates a lot of food insecurity for Californians, but, oh, one in five Californians suffers from food insecurity. The third is that it is wanting jurisdictions to decrease, decrease their greenhouse gas footprint. I know this is a pretty high reduction, but the goal is to be at 75 reduction statewide. It's not exclusive to Norco, these, this is for every city in the state of California. SB 1383 puts requirements on jurisdictions. The one, the first one is to provide organics collection services for both residents and commercial customers. In our sense, that was our role. We had to make sure that we provided the city with programs that we would collect this waste from. The other one is to conduct education and outreach to the community. Then it's also to secure access to recyclable and edible food recovery capacities. Also establish, like I mentioned before, establish edible food recovery programs, procure recyclable and recover organic products and then monitor compliance and conduct enforcement. A lot of this others, has a lot of layers, but one of the ones that I want to focus on are the monitoring of compliance and, monitoring compliance and conduct enforcement and also education and outreach. Okay.
Glenda.
Yeah?
Real quick, I'm going to jump in there. So just for the group's benefit, just before Glenda gets too far in this, please understand that this is a state mandate. It is not a Norco mandate. We are the governing agency that the state has identified. Every jurisdiction is responsible for their area. Waste management is not the, the bad guy in this scenario. They are doing the compliance in regarding capturing the data, in regards to who's properly using the bins, who's not using the bins, giving you notices if you fail to put the recyclables in the recyclables, the organics in the organics. And they give that data to the city because the city is responsible for filing the actual reports to the state. So ultimately, this is a, a state mandated program on the city that Waste Management in the contract is agreeing to provide the services that are needed, collect the data that it's needed, that we have to report to the state. So if you get a notice that says that you contaminated your recycle bin by putting organics in it, it, they're just telling you, you did something that is contrary to 1383 and they're, they're going to give you information about how to not do that again. If it ever gets to the point to where you've done it multiple times in a year, then it's up to the city to actually send you a citation for that. So it's not Waste Management. I want to make that clear. They're just applying the information, doing the education, giving you the carts, providing data, information, but they're collecting the data and they're doing that analysis as they're the ones out there every day and giving that to the city. So it's a city program that we have to implement. We have no choice in it and we understand that nobody's really excited about organics, but we are, the state is passionate about this and expects the city to show progress. So we're working together with Waste Management to develop this program to make sure it's effectively done right and it's city-wide. It's commercial or, and it's residential, everybody has to participate in it. So what we're doing is making it possible for you to do that. It's a personal choice whether you choose to do something, but if you get a notice that says something is not done right, that's what it's for, that's their job to do that. Ultimately, it's to communicate to you, educate you, to hopefully get you to, to move forward with this program, to help the city out, because as a city, we need to show compliance as a whole. And so I just wanted to make sure I gave you that little bit of education on why the program's being done and who's implementing it and what it's for, as Glenda goes through the, each of the examples.
Thank you, Chad. Like Chad said, I mean, one of the things that we could all agree is that SB 1383 has a lot of responsibilities on all of us, us as haulers, the city and you as residents. And I think that together, that's the only way that we are going to achieve the, the goals and the expectations that SB 1383 has on jurisdictions, so we all play a key role. And because of that, I did want to share with you, I know that a lot of us, and, and, you know, my household sometimes is guilty of this too, but we all want to recycle and we all think that anything that's plastic is recyclable and that is not the case. That, you know, shelf that you have that's plastic, don't put it in the recycle, put it in the trash or call us as a bulky. Really, if you could think of recycle as, if there's not a market for it, it's not going to be recycled. And the more contamination that is in it, the more processing costs go up, and so if we all play our part and do it right to begin with, I think that we could really make a difference. So what goes in my recycle cart? And so the recycle cart should only get plastic bottles and containers, please empty them. We don't want you to super rinse the ma- We don't want you to super rinse them out because we don't want you to waste water, but just make sure that they're empty. Also, food and beverage cans, glass bottles and containers, paper and cardboard and paper board. As I mentioned before, if you could -- if you could flatten the cardboard, that'd be great. That way it allows you to put more items in. If you don't have a lot of items to recycle and you don't need to flatten it, that's fine. As long as that lid closes, we're good. So please, no food or liquid. One of the things, no plastic bags. I know some of us in the past have, you know, we have a little container, and we put a plastic bag, and then we just grab the recyclables and we throw them in the recycle bin. Please open that bag, dump them in, and either use that bag again or, you know, throw it away in the trash. But no plastic bags in the recycle, please. Also styrofoam, no styrofoam. I know clothing, obviously, furniture, carpet, batteries, electronics, and hazardous waste or anything, or yard waste. So just really the basics, plastic bottles, cans, glass, paper, and cardboard. Here on the side is what your current -- some of you have a current recycle cart that's all gray. With SB 1383, that will be changed into a dark gray bottom and a blue lid. Organics. What goes in your organics cart? Obviously, food waste, yard waste, produce, soiled paper, coffee filters, and tea bags. And by soiled paper, I mean not your, you know, paper plates that have a film. It has to be like paper, 100% paper. So if you have paper plates that have like a glossy film on it that you bought at Costco, those are trash. It's not going to be recycled because it has to be paper. Also, I know sometimes we go out and we eat and we have a little container, so as long as it's a paper container, then you can put that in there. But if it's not, then it goes in the trash. Meats, fish, poultry, dairy products, bread, pasta, rice, grains, and coffee grounds. Again, we do ask that these items be put without a bag because of the fact that bags, whether they be compostable or not, they do -- at the processing facility where we take them, they do not compost in the time that we need them to. And so if you think about compost, you know, we all garden, and when we go and we buy compost, we want it to be nice and clean. We don't want to be scared of putting our hands in there. So just think of it that way. That's the after product, us providing compost that is used -- easy to be used and safely. So again, only this, no bottles, cans, plastic bags, or any other material. I know some of you are thinking, how am I going to do that and keep my cart smelling good? Well, we can't say you are, but we are offering -- these are some tips for you to follow. Obviously, we think that by -- we layering food scraps between -- will allow you to have different layers. So if you start with your green waste and organics, it will -- it will allow the green waste to absorb a lot of the organic material. Set your cart out on your collection day. I know, for example, for me, in my household, we don't necessarily fill up the cart, but since I am participating in the organics program, I don't want that material to be out for an extra week just because it's not full. I want to make sure that it gets emptied. So whatever quantity you have, if, you know, when you're participating, please take it out so that we could service it, and that way it doesn't stay in your cart for longer than it needs to. Sprinkle baking soda on top of the organics will help minimize the odor. Also, keep discarded scraps in your fridge or freezer, and take them out when it's, you know, trash day on Monday. I mean, that way they're not out in the sun or, you know, they're frozen and they'll take, you know, they'll -- they'll be less rotten, you know, for the collection day. Also, we do, one of the things also that I've found is that if you place your organics cart in a shaded area, that helps with, you know, making sure that the food doesn't decompose quickly and it's in a better condition for when we collect it. Trash, I mean, plastic bags, like I mentioned, foam, everything that doesn't go in the others goes here. However, obviously, no hazardous waste, no batteries, no electronics. We just really basic things. And one thing I do want to say, as much as we love our pets, their droppings go in the trash. They don't go in the organics. And by pets, I mean dogs or, you know, cats or whatever, because I know we have horses. But one of the things is that a lot of people tend to put the pet waste in the organics thinking that it's going to be, you know, that it's organic, but it's not. So please put that in the trash. Again, this is your current color, burgundy, and the new one will be gray bottom with a black lid. Manure, obviously, if you could, please ask that you keep the manure clean and dry. Clean the manure lids closed to minimize exposure to weather, rain, et cetera. No trash, green waste, food waste, pet waste, rocks, or dirt. No plastic bags, cans, glass bottles, needles, or lancets. You'd be surprised how many, you know, people throw glass bottles in there, and then there's glass in the, you know, compost that it becomes. Also, no horseshoes, feedbags, or baling twine. And currently, your manure cart is all black, and it'll be gray bottom with a beige lid. So SB 1383, you might ask yourself, why are we having to change our carts? So the state wants the -- this color scheme to be the color scheme across all cities. So if you move to, I don't know, San Diego, you want -- you'll always associate the blue with recycle. You'll always associate the green with organics. You'll always associate the black with trash. So that's the goal, is that wherever we go, we know where -- what cart -- what goes in what cart. And so obviously, for many other cities, they don't have manure, but for us, we do have a specific dedicated manure cart color scheme because of that commodity. Here is a map of our five-year plan to ensure that everyone has a SB 1383 compliant cart. I do want to point out that the regulation requires the cart exchange to be in 2036, and so we are committing to doing it a lot sooner. We are committed to doing it in five years. So the first color is a green, so this would be year one, year two, year three, four, and then five. Yes. So through the cart -- new cart exchange, we will be sending notifications to those customers that will be getting the new carts, so that way you know that it's coming and when we're going to be switching them out. Typically, what it is that we do on a Monday where we service you, we just ask that you leave the carts out, and then we'll swap them out for the new ones. And so if we haven't done all three at the same time, you know, just don't worry. We have other carts that are coming to get -- to deliver the cart for you. So, but notification will be sent out notifying you that you are going to be getting new You might ask yourself, how is waste management going to know about what I'm putting in my carts, right? Well, we are going to be doing that through our smart truck technology. Our trucks are going to be have cameras, three cameras, one on the side loader, one on the hopper, and then one in the front. Wide shot, yeah, a wide shot in the front. So wide shot in the front, hopper, and then the side loader. What is going to happen is that we are going to capture as the truck is servicing you and it's dumping the material into the hopper. And the hopper, I mean, that's where everything falls in. There'll be footage of what is being -- what is being thrown into the truck. And so we have a dedicated team of technicians that are going to be reviewing that footage for each address, and if they do identify that contamination is in the recyclables, they will notify you through a letter or an email, whichever is your preference. I spoke about that. So I know none of the -- none of these are yours, but I just wanted to show you. We do have instances where this is what we collect. So that is considered an overage. That is an excessive amount of green waste. And so we're not going to collect that because it's, you know, a lot, and it's probably not easy for our trucks to pick it up. Here's another one. This is an organics cart, and you can see there's bottle, there's paper cups, there's straws, so that's contaminated. This is a recycle cart, and remember I told you that we all want to recycle and we think that everything that's plastic is recyclable? Well, it's not. I see a hula hoop. I don't even -- I don't even know what that is, but this was a wood frame. So those type of situations would be the ones that would receive a notice from us, letting them know that that's what we captured. And like Chad said, there is going to -- residents here in NORCO have a 12 -- that if in the first, you have one or two instances of this contamination or overages in the 12-month period, you will -- you may be able to -- you may be charged a contamination and overage service fee. And we will let you know. Our goal is that you would correct the behavior here by us letting you know what goes in there, so that way you don't get to here.
Ma'am, ma'am, we're going to answer questions at the end.
Yes, I'm going to go to the other one, yeah. So this is going to be a sample of the notification that you're going to get. It's going to let you know, dear so-and-so, on such and such date, we observed that you had contaminants in your recycle cart. Please make sure that you put only, you know, paper, you know, all the right things that go in there. The letter will also have a screenshot in the bottom of the image that was captured. However, we do offer the link to customers. Once you sign on and get an account with us, you'll be able to go into your account and look at the actual footage of what our technician saw. Do you mind hovering and playing the video? So this is a recycle cart video that I wanted to share with you. So this is some kind of like a bed or foam. So this is the stuff that we don't want to see in there. And so we would -- we provide you with the image and also the video if you have -- if you want to see it more in depth. Also, what I wanted you to see is not just -- the smart truck technology is also going to help us provide better service. We have different angles that we see, so as we're driving and, you know, we could see how many carts were put out. We could see, you know, it being dumped in there, and we could also see the wide image in that the front of the car -- of the truck sees. Can you play the video? So this is all our cameras at once. So this is a rear view. You see how here we get to see how many carts were out as we're servicing them. Here's the hopper in the top. Here's a curbside view of what we see, and the angle of the hopper. So as I mentioned before, community, our commitment to community engagement is strong. We want to be part of the community, and we really thought about providing, what else could we provide NORCO? And so this is where we wanted to enhance NORCO's, you know, rural lifestyle, and one of the things that we want -- we'll be introducing is chickens for Green NORCO, where we commit $1,000 -- $10,000 annually to this program. We are still in the process of developing and finalizing the program, but please stay tuned. Our goal is that if a customer, if a resident wants to participate in this program by utilizing chickens to be, you know, as an organic program for their household, that that would be a possible solution for you. Also scholarships for NORCO students only. Our goal is that we can provide not just specific scholarships for, like we want to make sure that they incorporate trades, you know, universities, so that it widens the scope of the students that could apply. And we will be providing more information on that. Here is the -- here is the compost. We will be participating and providing you guys with a free compost and mulch giveaway. That way you can, you know, utilize it at your home. And again, the document shredding will be added to the community cleanups. The food buckets, it's -- here's a food bucket with a -- that's my hand, by the way. I was a hand model for a bit. So where I -- and honestly, I -- it really does make it easy to participate because it fills up, and then I just go and dump it. And I've actually had less trash in my house now because I'm actually throwing away stuff that could be composted. We have compost bins. This is an image of what they would look like. It's one of the ones that you can, like you turn. So again, both the food pail and the compost bin would be provided at request. Street sweeping, I believe that currently the street sweeping is only at certain areas, but now this would be a citywide street sweeping, so you will see your streets, a lot more streets cleaner. And one of the things that was really, you know, the council and wanted is to have a local office. So because a lot of, you know, a lot of residents go and are accustomed to going to City Hall to pay their bill and things like that, we are going to be providing a local office for that to continue to happen. It'll be in our one-stop customer service. So if you want to talk about your, you know, account, change service, you have any, like, questions, we'll be happy to answer them instead of -- you'll actually have a person to go to. We still are in the process of identifying the locations, so please stay tuned for that. I do believe that this document, the bill insert, letting you know about the billing transition is on some of your chairs, and you should have gotten this on your -- this is in your bill. Starting July 1st of this year, we will be managing all the accounts. We will be managed -- so currently, the city manages them, but now we will be managing them. So starting July 1st, we will be your point of contact. You will, however, see a -- you will get an invoice from the city for June services, and you should get the -- the last batch of those invoices should be going out by August 8th of this year. One of the questions that we did have is in, when we take over the billing, we take the accounts that the city has because they're active in our system, so there is no activation fee, you know? Any existing account just carries over. There's no fees attached to it as a setup fee or anything like that. So I just wanted to make sure that I pointed that out. Again, the local office, and then that will serve as a customer service, another customer service option for you for payments, accounts, and service matters. One of the things that we are proud of is that we offer different avenues of communication that you could utilize. You don't have to wait for the office to be open. We are accessible 24/7. Obviously, the office would be the in-person, by phone, our 1-800 number. We will have email. There's live chat at our WM.com, and there's -- which offers a 24/7 cell service technology that you could utilize. We also have a mobile phone app where you can, you know, look at your account, schedule a bulky item pickup. It's a one-stop shop. And obviously, we have your traditional mail. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Glenda.
I feel like I erased though, threw it back.
No, you did great. Thank you. So as we talked about earlier, to try to answer all your questions in a controlled fashion, because you may have many, hopefully maybe Glenda did so well, you have none. We're asking you to write your question down on the piece of paper that you're provided. If it's on -- if you need one, let us know. We can get you some paper. If you already have one, just raise your hand with that. We'll come by and grab it. We'll collect them all. Glenda and I will organize them, and then we'll answer those as soon as we can. So give us like five minutes, and we'll get it all squared away.
We have pens. We have pens.
So, any last questions? And we'll do our best to answer every single one of them. All right, so, Glenda. Okay. Gary's got one. All right, first question. Is there any percent of manure that can go into the organic bin? Matt, hello, hello? Can you hear in the back?
That's a Bob Saget.
Doesn't go up. Matt, can you go up? Okay, I'll try to do it. So, is there any percent of manure that can go into the organic bin?
No.
No. That's what a manure cart is for. So, it's, it's.
Not anymore.
It's not anymore.
Because of SB 1383.
Yep. And just to give you an idea, it's really important that folks use the manure carts because it actually is far cheaper to dispose of manure per ton than it is organics. It's $107 per ton for organics, only 28 for manure. So, if you want to put stuff and have everybody do manure in the organics, it will cost you four times as much. So, it's real important that we segregate that because we have a local entity, Veramontes, that's able to process that entity, which is just the manure only. And we get the best deal out of that because it's local and close. So, it's real important that folks don't add organics, like manure, it is an organic, into their organics cart. It's specific on there. It does say what you're supposed to put in it. And animal waste is not one of those things you put in it, which includes manure. All right, where does baling twine go?
In the trash.
In the trash. What about private streets? They only use the same truck to pick up all the trash and receptacles.
So, we will be looking into that because CalRecycle does want us to offer the three, you know, commodities. So, we will be developing a program where we will start separating. Obviously, those streets are very unique. So, it will require us to do some onsite visits and assess it to provide, maybe one of the solutions in some communities is that we will have your services divided so that we go in and, you know, go out. Or if a big truck could fit in there. I mean, a lot of the concerns of why the big truck can't go in there is because they're private properties and they don't want us to, you know, damage them. So, it will require a little bit more looking into. But we will have to assess those in making sure that we do provide those customers with the three carts or four carts.
And to clarify, as far as the city's concerned, it is required the waste management has to provide those carts or bins, or depending what you want. You must segregate it. There is, are no exceptions, whether you're a private road or not. Because they have the responsibility to make sure the city is in 100% compliance. And an excuse cannot be, well, it's a private street. We're just using one can or one thing. They must actually provide you all those carts. It's mandatory through the entire city, private or not. So, eventually, if you have, where you have one can, you will be transitioned to the three-cart system or maybe a four-card if you have manure also. But it's mandatory citywide. I think that's one of the questions in here. So, let me get to that. I saw it. It says here, we already have two green carts we are charged for. Will we now only be charged for one? Yes. You're going to get a bundled service. If you're residential, you get your trash, your recyclables, and your green cart. So, you're getting those three at the rate you're charged. If you have a second one, that's free. You're not being charged for it. So, you now have a second one that basically you're going to save on that.
Oh.
We're going to meet afterwards on this one. We talked already. Put that in my pocket.
Yeah, sure.
It's a lot about the rates and stuff. I'll get to that afterwards if there's time. All right, can manure be put in the green waste can? We've already answered that one. It just says large item pickup. So, again, large items, bulky items, something that can't fit reasonably in a trash can. You have your three times a year where you can have bulky items picked up. And you can get up to three each time, correct? So, large items, call for bulky item pickup. If you do it online, it's really easy. I just happened to do this recently at my home. And you just go online with your online account. And you tell them what bulky item pickup. You tell them what it is. You pick your date. And then, they come and pick it up. So, it's really easy process. Correct, in an organized fashion. If it's, if it's just a couch, you put a couch out there. Or if it's a fridge, you put a fridge out there. If it's in pieces, they really want you to bundle it up and not have, you know, 100 pieces of a large item you happen to take apart.
Yeah, so, think about, obviously, the large pieces would be, you know, appliances or like your washer, your dryer, your fridge, sofas. But if you have more items, if you put them in a box or something, just think, our driver has to pick it up himself and put it in the truck. So, that's where having it contained and easily, easily for him to pick it up, that makes a big difference for us. No, those don't have to be, yeah, it could be, as long as it's on the curb and close to the carts. Yeah.
This one, is there a penalty for putting recyclables in the trash can? So, as Glenda talked about before, we're going to try to get compliance through education. So, you're going to get a notice from them. So, if they see from the cameras that you had organic, recyclables, and you left them in the trash, a bunch of cans, aluminum, whatever it might be, if they see that through their system, they'll send you a notice saying, hey, we saw that you dumped this material that's supposed to be in, not in the trash, but in the recyclables. And it's meant to be an education piece, reminding you that. You're not going to get a fine right away, anything like that. They'll give you a second notice if it happens again. If it gets to be a third-time issue, then they're really working with us because we get all that data. We get all that information. Everybody that has been given an informational notice, let's call it, the first and second time. And we track that stuff because the state requires me to report all that information. If we get to a third time, that's when the city will most likely get involved and actually cite you for noncompliance. Because we've tried to educate, we've tried to educate. And again, that, even that time, we may, when talking with you, we may decide there's an issue going on, we need to assist you with. It's a case-by-case scenario. But again, we're not trying to just hammer you on the first time. We really are trying to be education first, education first, and go through that route. So, this is not a program where I want to go out and fine people. But it's a mandated process by the state where we have to document everything we're doing. The routes for checking, the documentation, they want verification of all the notices we sent out. Did we actually cite people? If not, why not? So, there's a lot of stuff that may, the bureaucracy, they make us do. So, it's all part of the process. But we're not looking to penalize you. But we have to have something that shows we're trying to get you into compliance. And then, the other question is, can you pay the bill on the waste management website?
Yes, you can. And you could also sign up for auto pay or paperless billing. But you are able to pay your bill online.
So, this one is, why does the plastic bags and foam packaging have recyclable signs and you don't recycle?
So, the recycle sign was really meant to promote plastics. It wasn't really designed to advertise that that item is recyclable. So, even though you have a nice little thing that says recyclable, it's really letting you know that it's plastic and what type of plastic it is. So, that is not recyclable. Styrofoam is not, so, in order for us, for someone to recycle styrofoam, there's a vast quantity that needs to be collected. Like, you know, is it DART? Yeah, DART. There's special companies that do that. But the volume that we would collect would not be nearly what we need to recycle styrofoam. Okay. So, Lily did point out that styrofoam, by the time it gets to the recycling facility, it tends to crumble. And so, the volume of it even gets less by the time it gets to our facilities.
Where do you put dead animals like chickens?
That's a good one. Well, if I don't, if I... You know what? If I don't allow dog poop, and I can't allow that chicken to be in the organics, it has to go in the trash. But what about, I mean, what about the feathers? No. I want to stick to my answer. No.
But we will, we will research that just to make sure we give you an absolute answer and why.
If it changes, I'll let you know. I'll let you know.
We'll keep that in mind. That's something we are special cards.
Yeah, that is a good question, yeah.
We'll get an answer to that that's more clear and definitive.
That's a first for me. So, thank you.
Long material branches and leaves goes where?
In the organics. So, that continues to go there. Oh, I do want to say no palm fronds in the organics, please. Because they have sharp edges and they're fibrous and they don't break down. Yes, yes. Firewood, we don't, no. If it's clean wood, like small pieces, yes. But it has to be small pieces.
Can feedbags go in the recycle bin?
No.
Yeah, what are they made of? Educate me.
But see, that's where I go into, what kind do you have? I don't have, like, you can't call me and say, this is the one I have. So, if I say yes to this one, then it opens the door to that one. So... Because the feed stores, I actually, I actually had a CalRecycle person ask me this question. And they are paper, but they do have lining sometimes. And that, we don't have the time to separate the different components, take out the plastic or the thread that they get, you know, sewn on. So, it's, it's a no. They have a what? But remember, we said that even though it has the recycle thing, it doesn't mean it's recyclable. Yeah.
And we recognize we're all going to learn through this wonderful process together.
Well, we'll be, we'll make sure that we give educational pieces to, for these particular questions. We'll add it to our guide. The copy that you guys got, obviously, is our starting point. Like, for these type of questions, we'll make sure we add, we'll get answers for those questions. So, that way, you all know, specifically for the yard waste.
All right. Auto is, will auto pay be available? I have it now.
Yes, it will be available.
The second question on here is, one replacement container per year for each type of container?
Yes.
So, each year?
So, if we, if that happens, call us and let us know that it got damaged and we'll send you another one. That wouldn't fall under the free, like, yeah, that's a damaged cart. And sometimes, I mean, I know I've heard from you guys that they fall in the hopper. So, let us know. And typically, the driver notes the count. But, you know, it doesn't hurt to call us and just confirm that we have that noted so that you could get a new cart.
In general.
A replacement.
Yeah, in general, what I'd say is, and we've already had the discussion of waste management, is if your cart is damaged and it is not your fault, they will replace it. It's not going to cost you something. If the wheel pops off, lid's gone, it splits, they will replace it or they will fix it, one or the other. It's not additional charge. That's a commitment they have.
I do want to point out, I don't think I mentioned this, but one of the requirements that we have is that we have to use post-consumed plastics to build these. So, I know a lot of you are going to be like, it's not the same as my old cart. Or it's not, you know, it's thinner, whatever. Know that we, as a hauler, we have to use post-consumed plastic to create them. So, they are a little bit more thinner than what you're accustomed to. So, that's why we also want to make sure that you know that if that, if they do crack or they need, or they're damaged, please let us know. We'll replace them.
I think you mentioned this earlier, but new bins replaced... I think you mentioned this earlier, but new bins replaced in a timely manner, when lost in truck, or any dump driver takes them out. Again, call them, they will replace it. It does happen, they do fall in the hopper. Call them, and they will replace it.
I'll like, I'll definitely... Yeah. During, I do, I mean, COVID was a very challenging time for us, and we're very proud that we were able to continue service. I know a lot of other haulers weren't able to. We made sure that we kept our drivers safe. Because COVID impacted our manufacturers, our cart orders weren't coming in. So the shortage was because whatever we ordered wasn't coming in. And so unfortunately, our weight had to become our customers' weight. So I do apologize for that. Well, because we were, we were working with, I mean, we were impacted by COVID, right? Drivers did get COVID, and we had the 15-day quarantine and stuff. So our work orders were behind because of the shortness of staff. So during that time, they were. So, I mean, unfortunately, that, I am, I'm not happy that happens, but that would be kind of considered like a lost or stolen cart. So you could just call us and tell us that we'll replace it. No, just let us, just let us know that, you know, what happened, and you won't be charged.
The reality is, the burden is very high for Waste Management to prove that you did something. So if it splits, or this or that, unless you ran over a car, and it's sitting underneath your car when they show up, it's going to be real tough to say that you did something. Large roll-off bins, are we still required to use Waste Management? If so, why? So the general answer is yes. Waste Management is the franchise hauler for the city, so the services that are being provided go through Waste Management. So if you do use large roll-offs, that goes through Waste Management. Yes, sir? So if it's construction, you are not required to use Waste Management. They have a service for, and that's probably called C and D service. You can use it if you have a construction company that owns their own bin. If they own their own roll-off, then they can do that. But you can't use a third-party hauler to bring in, you know, whether it's Burt Tech or somebody else. Their bin can't be there. It has to be a privately-owned cart, or a roll-off, or Waste Management's, one or the other, but you do, you are allowed to do that if the construction company owns that roll-off. Because they're the franchise hauler, so they get the services. It's just all services all the way across. We don't, we don't pick and choose which ones they should or shouldn't do. It's all the services go through Waste Management. It really has nothing to do with competition. It's just the way we, when we do the contract, it's to have somebody that can provide all services, which they can, and they have the service available. The out is simply, if the person that you're hiring to do that C and D work has their own roll-off, you don't have to use Waste Management. Okay, so a couple of questions here. How long will the rates stay down? 10 years? So... So obviously, the rates are lower, and the increase is limited by the amount of Consumer Price Index that occurs. So it's capped out. The contract says they can't have anything higher than 4%. So if CPI determines it's 2%, they only get 2% increase. If it turns out it's 10%, they only get 4. So it's capped out at 4. And that's a better deal than Eastvale or Corona have, because theirs is capped out at 5. So we got a really good deal on that. We cap those increases. They're not going to fluctuate up and down dramatically, but they only get what CPI indicates with a cap of 4. So as far as what they'll go up to after year one or year two, that'll be up to the Consumer Price Index, and that's how we defined how that increase will be done. The next one is... Oh, interesting. Can we personalize our own cans?
Oh, like your address? Yeah, I think, I mean, that, I think that's actually pretty smart, especially with the monitoring that we're going to be doing. Yeah. No, if there, if you have a need to put your address, or some kind of marking to identify it, then that's by all means, please do. The barcodes are really more for the manufacturer, so we don't really, we don't, we don't get, we don't associate a particular barcode with this address.
So it's just the number then in front? Okay, my mistake. Let's see here. This one says, "City allowed, when needed, 1/3 of green..." Is that what's yours? Okay. How are we going to prevent walkers from contaminating, from contaminating our trash? Are you going to put locks on the cans?
No, we would not put locks on the cans. Obviously, we want them to be easily, accessibly to open. Yeah, so if, say for example, you do get a notice, and that happens, you just need to let us know. We're not, I mean, we've been put in this position because the state is requiring us to. We're not out there to be the trash police, you know? We trust that you, if you do have that happen, you know, you'll call us and let us know. Hey, I got this notice, but I want you to know that it was my neighbor, or whatever. You know, we will work with you. It's not like we are giving you a ticket, and that's it, you know? Yeah, it's just really meant for you to know that we observed it, and to, you know, be an educational piece.
And keep in mind, if you're a business owner, they do provide lockable bins. So if you get folks that come in and dump and this and that, you can get a lockable bin. Waste Management has the keys, and they can unlock them and lock them again. So that helps it if you have a commercial business there. Yes, ma'am? Yeah, certainly scavenging happens in every city. There is an ordinance even in Norco where you're not supposed to scavenge. But like everything, there's about priorities, whether that's what we're going to focus on in trying to get people to stop doing that particular thing. Whether they're getting the recyclables, or they're happening to grab the furniture that we left it on the curb, and they take away, which I take advantage of. My city, people seem to take away old stuff, which is great. But yes, it does happen, and we don't actively enforce it, because usually, they're just taking out the recyclables. They're not, if they were dumping it on the ground and making a mess, and it became an issue, we would certainly probably jump on that more often and try to figure out who's doing that type of thing. But for the most part, what I've seen, a lot of the scavengers generally understand if they make a mess and they keep a problem, they're going to get sought out and told to leave town, or get cited for it. So most of them try to be clean, but it is technically on our books, you can't scavenge. We don't actively enforce it, just to give you an idea. No, the placement of your trash cans, that was the question, is are they going to be placed differently, or should we place them somewhere different? Your cash cans go at the curb as they do now. They're not going anyplace different. So they should just, when on the night before, you can bring them out, and put them at the curb, and then by the end of the day, they should be brought back in to your residence. Okay. How are we going to, oh, here's the second question. Street sweeping is for curbed streets only, correct? No. Normally, we would love to do, have every street curbed, and it's easy to collect that, but we're doing street sweeping for the entire city, whether you have curbs or not. Also, it's going to be provided on private roads also. So they also get the benefit, as Norconians, to have your private street swept, as long as it has asphalt. If it's dirt, then they won't be sweeping that. So I want to make sure I was okay with that. But, so there could be one or two, depending on the condition of your private road, that you may not get street sweeping. But it's being provided on every street in town. It's going to be once a month. Currently, we do once a month on just the curb streets. Now it's once a month on every street. We're currently working with the schedule for the street sweeping company they're going to be using. And then on commercial areas, on Hamner and Sixth Street, it's done every week. Yes, ma'am? Understood. Well, there's not going to be an opt-out for an individual resident to not have your area swept. It's a program that's going to go up and down the street once a month to do their best to sweep it. Apologize if it's not perfect, but it's, it's an effort to try to, to keep the areas clean. Well, again, you can call me, and we can talk about it, and then when the street sweeper comes out now, I can come take a look at it. That's more of a programming thing. Maybe we have to explain to them something they're doing is incorrect, but we can certainly look at it that way. Not at this time. We're not involving that. We basically are highlighting that the street sweeper will not do it on Mondays, period, because that's the trash day, and everything else is out there. We want to keep it as clear as possible. That is something we will look at over time, that if it turns out we're not getting really an effective sweeping, because there's too many cars on the road on a certain day, we may look at that as a future thing to say, hey, parking only on certain days, you know, for street sweeping purposes, but we're not at that right now. We're just want to get it started, let's get something moving, and then we'll look at whether or not we need to change the program. Did Waste Management know about SB 1383 requirement at the time the bid was submitted?
Yes, it was well-defined in the RFP.
Yes, and it's been out there for the cities to digest and work with for a couple of years now. Is the 4% annual adjustment because of SB 1383 and the extra cost of the implementation? No. So it has actually nothing to do with 1383 or the extra cost of implementation. It's simply that, like any service, the Waste Management or any other provider, whether it's anyone else, is always going to be wanting and entitled to an increase in cost in some manner for their rates, because their costs go up, whether it's employees, materials, whatever it is. What we try to do is make sure we cap that as the smallest level possible. Right now, the current contract doesn't have a cap. It can, it literally can be anything based off of the information they provide to us, and they had 10% increase in their cost for employees, and 15% in materials, et cetera, and they will give that to us, and we review it and say, we want a 12% increase. And now it's up to the council to go through and determine what's fact from fiction, and what's fair. And obviously, they're concerned about the residents and what they can afford to pay, et cetera. This process simply caps it. We said, you deserve an increase, it's reasonable, it makes sense, but we're going to allow Consumer Price Index to determine that, and we're capping it at 4%. So that it's, it's left at that. So that's why we did that, just because it's a customary thing that most agencies have. We're just simply capping it.
I do want to add to that. So, see, our rate adjustments not, don't necessarily, they include the increases that we get at the gate, at the landfill. Even though we own the landfill, the county manages the scale house, and they set the rate for the landfill tonnage. Also, our processing facility for recyclables, our processing facility for organics. So those are the things that go up, and those are based, in addition to the CPI. That's what we base our annual request on. With the new agreement, obviously, that request cannot exceed the 4%. So like Chad said, if it's under, you know, we are entitled to it, but if it's over, we only get the 4.
Annually, yes.
So it's yearly, so your rate, your increased rate would be always on July 1st of every year.
So the third question on this card is, where is the chart you showed of environmental and social adaptations? Did you show a chart?
The CalRecycle chart?
Who had that question?
That is a chart that CalRecycle put together? Yeah. I think it's slide... Slide 12. This one? Can you, okay, it's going. Can you put slide 12 for us, please? Oh, 11, 11. Sorry, 11. That one. Is that the one you were referring to? So it says that one in five Californians suffer food insecurity, so they are in need of food? I just wanted to provide you with statistics that the state has put out as to the reasoning behind. Yeah, so this, so... This is more, I guess, we could utilize it also more for the commercial side, like for businesses that are generating food at large quantities, and are not, you know, selling it. Instead of them disposing of it, we want them to participate in edible food recovery programs that would allow those organizations to distribute those meals, or vegetables, or produce to those people that are in need of food. And it's part of SB 1383.
Yes.
We would be part, so the goal is to partner with nonprofit organizations that would be able to distribute the food to those in need.
Yeah, part of, part of the state's requirements is that commercial entities that have excess food they're not going to use, we try to encourage them to partner with local charities that can help distribute that food to hopefully local people in need, or it could be regional. So they have expectations that we work with all the entities, whether it's Stater Brothers, large groups or small groups, if they have extras that they can give away, that we partner them with local agencies that can grab that food, get it, take it to locations, distribute it. Those places that distribute it have to give us reports of how much they distributed, because we have to report that to the state. There's a ton of bureaucracy in this process, but the goal is, is they're trying to, and that's why they keep talking about this food insecurity, is that they're trying to highlight if we can take the food that's likely going to go to waste and give it to people that have it, we help deal with that food insecurity. That it puts more food available to everyone else, rather than just throwing it away. So that's the point of that slide. It's just something that the state uses as one of their filler information. Yes, Gary? You know that answer. No, I, again, the state has lots of ideas about these programs, what's supposed to be done. The reality of it, like anything, is we're going to find out what reality truly is, and how we're going to do it. We're just trying to develop the programs best we can. And again, if we, and it's done now. It's done today. People give food out, certain things that don't spoil, breads and things like that. They do that every day, canned food, whatever it is. They're just trying to highlight that. We track those programs now, try to highlight, so they can count it, and say, look, here's how much food's being given away, here's, because of SB 1383, et cetera. So totally get your point, but that's a lawyer question to answer. But I couldn't answer, but we're still obligated to try to help promote those kind of programs as best we can. Yes.
Correct.
So here it says, "Manure bins are on our street, are regularly..." So here it says, manure bins are on our street are regularly not picked up every second or third time. How can we ensure they are regularly picked up?
I mean, if you could provide me with your address, I'll definitely look into specifically that particular incident. I mean, you should be getting the service that you pay for. So if that's not happening, then please do reach out to me or to our team and we'll be able to look into that further so that you don't find yourself in that situation.
So let me say this. We know 100%, there are plenty of locations that don't get their manure picked up when they expect it to be. And there's reasons for it because the equipment couldn't pick it up, the truck couldn't do it, et cetera. Waste Management and Norco have been working for that for years. There is no weight limit on your manure cart, but there's a weight limit of what their equipment can handle. So what we tried to help develop was, how do we figure out we give more reliable service when it occurs? And one of the things that Glenda showed you earlier is they modified some of their trucks so that when a truck comes out and a side loader can't pick it up, they're supposed to call their dispatch and the dispatch by the end of the day, depending on when that occurred, or the very next day by noon, is supposed to take the other truck that has the forks in the front to be able to pick that up and do that. Because they understand every day matters to you on a manure cart. You can't wait three days. You can't wait a week. So they're trying to come up with solutions because, like I said, even though they want clean, dry manure, we know that's not possible all the time. But the reality is, is that their equipment can only do so much and they've come up with a solution to do it either that day, depending on when it occurs, or by the next day by noon. Those are things that I make sure that they are meeting those standards so that when we get complaints or we hear about things, I note those and I go back to the monthly complaint log that they have to give me and I don't see that on there. I'm going to go, wait a minute, you didn't log this issue. Where is it? You should have logged it, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of accountability that we have to do as a city to make sure they're meeting their obligations as a provider. So I just want to emphasize that, that when we talk about a weight or an overage issue when it comes to manure, there is not a weight limit on it. But again, we don't want you filling with water and trying to prove a point. If, is do your best to make it as dry as you can. If they can't pick it up, they're committing to pick it up by the next day at the latest. If not, there are actually penalties for not doing so. They get charged each time that doesn't occur. My goal would be to make sure you still get a cart back, something quickly. So we need to know right away, meaning Waste Management. You're calling them for the complaint. They will address the issue. If you call us, we just pass it along to them. So work on the new processes. Call Waste Management, but we're always in contact with them to make sure you get that. So I just want to emphasize that. They are working on those processes. The second thing is, if it's a routine problem, as Glenda talked about, is that we can get you two 64-gallon carts. So if that's a better solution for you than 196, it's the same price. So you'll get two smaller carts and get one. If that solves the issue where you repeatedly not getting any carts that are picked up, then again, there's another solution they've come up with. It's the same cost. So they're making efforts to try to understand that this community is very unique and by far, the manure bin is the heaviest thing they deal with. So they're looking for solutions. It's never going to be perfect. They're going to make mistakes. Things happen, whether it's a mechanical breakdown, it couldn't handle whatever it might be, but they're committing to do the service as best as they can. You had a question? No. That's good, that, the 264 is starting July 1. Yeah, so... So what I can tell you is you've probably called the wrong people. You should have called Norco because Waste Management isn't the customer service rep right now. Yeah, so you would normally, right now, until July 1, you're still calling us for customer service. That we relay to them. July 1, it is 100% go to Waste Management. Again, and we're going to work on that transition part. That's why we're trying to do a lot of advertisement information to say, in July, you'll go directly to them, but for right now, you still go to us. So changes in your service. What's that?
So our facility, our local office would be the best way because they would have a unique number. And once we get that finalized on the location and get all that set up, we'll make sure that we provide that information for you guys so that you know who to contact as of July 1st. Monday through Friday, yeah. Well, as much as, I mean, our smart truck does provide us with the ability to look at the footage and if it is an error on our part, rest assured that we will notify operations. We'll go back and look at the footage for that day. And if your carts were out and we missed it, then that would be an education opportunity for the driver to be made aware that that behavior is not tolerated. So the, I mean, the customer service rep can see some information on your account. However, a case gets open because they can't confirm until operations, which has the access to the specific programs, they could be the ones that will determine that. So a case would be opened and we would be able to, obviously, we would still send the cart back but we would want to know what happened so that the behavior, whether it be on our end or the customers, gets addressed.
So this one is, I'm a resident for 34 years. My scout fee went from zero to 107. I got no benefits, no bulky pickup, no senior benefits. I have two commingled dumpsters. My friend down the street pays $25 for scout fee. Why is my bill going down not on the flyer?
The city does the billing, so I don't know what he's talking, like how the account, I would, we would need to know how the account's set up. But if you give me the service level, then we could kind of give you an idea of what to expect on your new invoice.
So I'm happy to talk with you afterwards if you want to come up and talk about that. Obviously, it will depend on what your scenario is. There aren't different scout fees. There's only one scout fee. And normally, if you're paying 107, it's because it's $54, wherever the number would be, per pickup. $53, $53? $54 per pickup. Every time you get a bin picked up, it's, and that scout fee is used, it's charged twice. So if you do, if it was picked up twice, you're paying $107, $108. So, but there's no $25 fee for scout first. I'm aware of how that would be charged. But I think the best thing to do is, let's talk afterwards. We'll look at your account and I can tell you ultimately what your service level will be. Yes. None of it. If Waste Management damages my cart, will I be charged for a new cart? No. This is a manure question about in the cart. We've already answered the no manure in the green cart. I think you answered this. Are the plastic covers on the horse shavings bags supposed to go into the trash recyclables? We said trash?
Trash.
So what carts are included in a three-cart service?
The three, the green, the black, and the blue. The additional cart, whether, if you need manure service, that would be an additional cost.
The next question is, who delivers the free mulch? So what we're going to do with that is we'll have basically a mulch giveaway and we're still trying to develop how we want to do it. Basically, we'll probably pick a location around town. It might be Ingalls or something like that. It seems to be the default area for big events like that is we would have, advertise a free mulch giveaway where Waste Management would bring in mulch material that we would give away. And then folks would come in and basically shovel it into their cars and they could take it home. But that's, we're still trying to develop it, but it's basically free. And, but we're not doing free delivery to each of, into those houses. It's going to be one location where you come, pick some up and then, and you could have free mulch. But we're still trying to figure out that process. And the last one is... Will private streets receive street sweeping service? The answer was that was yes.
As long as they're paved.
As long as they're paved, yes.
I do want to take a moment to, I mean, I know someone from our team has been paying attention to all the operation questions. I do want to introduce David Moore, who is our district manager. He oversees our Corona hauling, which services the city of Norco. So Dave, can you wave to everyone? So when a complaint comes to me, I go to him. So it's like, it's like this, yeah. One, two, three. 65, I think? Or 55, 55. 65? Yeah, 65, yes. 65.
I don't recall, 65, okay. So, hold up.
Yes, there is.
So this one says, it's kind of into that question. Do I still get the care program discount? So you get the care program discount on the city's bills that we are providing, which is the water and sewer and that, as it goes through that process. Waste Management has their own discount process that they're following as far as for seniors, disabilities. So they offer that and it's in the rate sheet that that's offered. You would.
You have to let us know, yeah. If you have a senior account with the city, it will transfer. But if you don't, if you're currently under just a regular, we would be, we would need to be notified of that. Yeah.
Will you have a drop-off to pay the bill at your office?
I mean, if you're, if that's what they currently do, I guess so. I don't know, until I, we finalize the lease and stuff, I wouldn't know where, if, where we're to place it, but I will make a note of that, yeah. I'll confirm that. I mean, I don't see a problem, but obviously, we want to make sure that if you do have a drop box, that it's in a secure location that can, you know, be accessible to you but also doesn't attract any, you know, people stealing it or things like that.
It says, does the county dump rules change? We aren't oper, we don't, I'm not sure how to answer this because we obviously don't have jurisdiction for how the county allows you to dump at their facilities. So you'd have to check with the county as far as anything changing. But it's certain, nothing's changing related to our agreement with Waste Management, how you may choose to go to the county to dump material. I'm not sure if I understood that question right. Can you put shavings in the green waste?
I don't think so.
What's that?
No, I don't think so. We can't put shavings, because the shavings might have droppings.
Yeah, I think that's the assumption is, if it's contaminated. I got nailed on that because I had shavings with my little hamsters.
I was going to say, I didn't want to say, I didn't want to point it out, but Chad has been caught, tagged. His cart was tagged that he had his hamster shavings in the green.
I put them in the green waste thinking they're recyclable and I got tagged. So the answer is no. If it's got animal waste in it, then no, it can't be in the green waste.
The trash. I mean, we understand that, you know, when you're scraping manure, there's going to be some shavings, but if it's, you know...
You could put the shavings in the manure cart. Because we know that you are commonly taking shavings and manure and that can go in the cart.
Yes. To be determined.
We're looking at that one.
Oh, I thought you meant like your chicken that was roaming around and, no.
I think the issue with that is more about blood and it's not like a processed animal. Again, just, we're going to have to look into it. We don't know that specific answer, but like I said, it was a good question.
I mean, if you are already doing your part by other means, I mean, one of the things, obviously, not purchasing that much organics because you don't, you know, consume that much. Our goal is just to provide you with an outlet. Whether you have the volume necessary, that's... I mean, we will give you the bucket, but we don't want the bucket to be sitting out there in your kitchen forever if it takes you that long to fill it up. So, you know, we will leave it up to your discretion. If the volume is substantially low, then, you know, you could always put it in the trash. But we, our goal is that if you do generate sufficient amount, then that you would put it in the green. In the green cart, organics. Go ahead. That would go in the trash.
All right, next question. Will we be charged for manure can if we don't have any animals? Well, no, you don't need a cart. And the manure cart is completely optional only if you need it. The mandatory three carts are recycling, green waste, and trash. So manure is always an optional service that you have to request. It says, is there a discount for, is there a senior citizen discount? Yes, they do have one. Is the cost general or specific as to how many we can have in total? But what didn't say, is, I'm assuming this is the number of cans you have? So you, again, you get your base cost, you get the three carts. If you want one extra of each of the recyclables and organics, you get those for free. Beyond that, in any of them, you pay for on an individual basis. July, everything we're talking about here starts July 1st. What due process will be established before any fines are levied? And it talks about scavengers, other issues, whatnot. And again, just want to highlight, we're not looking to fine people. We're going to educate the heck out of you to try to help you understand why we need you to comply as best you can. No, we don't expect perfect citizens here where everybody's getting every scrap of this or that. We're just looking for real obvious folks that honestly are not even trying and those are really the folks that we're going to focus mainly on. I don't expect to have 100% of organics not in your trash can. It's, you're going to have different things. We're looking for really the clear and obvious issues and we're going to educate like crazy before we get to that point. And it's really, it means we've got to talk to you a lot. Technically, per the agreement, it's the third time is where we could start doing that. But we want to solve the issue well before that.
And typically, we do like a 60-day educational period where we focus on giving you the information so that you are fully aware that we're going to start.
This one here is more about how we're placing the carts. We've already answered that. And this, this one had a second question. Will the sewer and street sweeping fee be absorbed in our trash fees? What are the fees? So there are no street sweeping or sewer fees. It's all a part of your rate. So your rate, you're getting this additional service that we've never had before at the cost that you're paying for your rate today. I mean, not today, when the new rates go into effect. So this is just additional services that we're able to get from Waste Management at no additional cost and this is what they bid on in order to do this work and all the bidders bid on doing this. Yes, ma'am? The notices that you get if you, if you contaminate a bin or a cart? If, if there's non-compliance repeatedly, meaning you're telling us to take a hike, you're not trying to make any improvement, then if we had to go that route, we could. But we're going to try to not do that. We just really want to work with you and figure out what's your issue, what maybe a different solution is for you. maybe a different solution is for you.
So my next question is, where does that revenue go? Is it to the city or to Waste Management?
It would be to the city. Because the city's the only one who's going to fine you when it comes to actual citations related to non-compliance.
Waste Management enforcement of that?
No. Because that fine would come to, the, the, the fine, the, the city, remember, the city is the enforcement agency. All, all official fines have to come from the city, and they only go to the city. They're not, that's not part of Waste Management's contract to do that. They're giving me documentation that says, we've sent three notices to them for non-compliance in this time period, and then we make a judgment call whether or not we need to, again, have some conversations, again, do we need to send a citation at that point?
So did this go out through an open competitive bid?
Yes, this was an open competitive bid process, yep. It says here, how much will rates go up? I have new carts with lists of acceptable objects. Why more new color code bins? We've talked about that, the state's requiring the color code in process. And I hope you will have a, a drop box for payments, there's that comment.
I do, I do want to point out, though, like, one of the reasons to, for us to monitor contamination is because you see that 75 percent reduction, so if we don't achieve it, then jurisdictions will be subject to being fined. And so, um, it's not just making sure that the, the goal is to have good recyclable products so that we do, in fact, divert that material from the landfill, and we would capture that diversion, because we do have to report it to the state on an annual basis.
So I think this one's just a normal, actually, a comment. Organic food waste, you know, and it says rodents and bug problem. We understand, like I said, the idea of having raw food in your cart without any plastic on it, everybody that's not the state is saying that's not desirable, but we still all have to do it. So we're all going to try to figure out that process, how you do, hopefully, again, if you had yard trimmings, you mix it in with your yard, with your organics at the time, it helps least, you know, combine it together and solidify a little bit more, and it's not just pure raw, any, we, again, this is, it'd be a very interesting process for everybody. The commercial businesses have all been required to do this for over a year, almost a little bit more. Now residential has to do it. So we understand it, do your best. That's all we're asking you to do, is be aware of it, tell your neighbors, explain what we're trying to do, but just do your best. And then last question is, plastic line, plastic buckets, recycle or trash? So if you have a plastic bucket, does it go in recycle or trash?
In the trash.
In the trash. If trash, where are they dumped?
Landfill.
Landfill. Yeah, in the landfill, how long to decompose?
Um, I'm not an engineer, but I don't, I could look it up. I don't even know if someone has looked that up, but it's a good question. Yes.
All right, any last questions?
We need to go to the front?
Yes. Yes. Mm-hmm.
Not July 1st, or before?
So...
So if your cart is broken or damaged right now, then, and depending on where you reside, that's when you would get your new carts, based on the five-year...
So I'll, I'll ask them more specifically, for what, for what thing, for manure? So that's after July 1. Then you can do that. Uh, I don't, do you take...
That was the question.
Are you taking orders ahead of time for these? Or do you want to wait till after July 1?
Inventory-wise, I don't, I would rather wait till July 1.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because that's when they're officially going to be out of the running, is July 1, so it really should be...
That's where, where our orders come in, before, yeah.
You had a question, I'm sorry?
Oh, I, I just wanted to make sure, um, I currently have two regular trash bins, so when it changes over and then we're in the section that gets replaced, they'll be bringing out exactly what I have, correct?
Yes, so whatever your account has as the quantity and the type of cart, that's what you will be replaced. Yeah.
So, my wife is part of our, this is what we're helping out, so we do our own, we throw that in the recycle bin?
You know what? It depends, you put it in a paper bag and put it in the recycle bin, however, one of the things that people have been doing is, is, yeah. Uh, one of the things that people have been doing since, you know, with the organics program, is they use it as a layer in the organics, so that could also be...
Interesting.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Yeah, it helps, it helps absorb, yeah. So one of the things why we kind of, depending on the, what type of shredder you have, you know, we have the nice shredders that go straight down, which are a little bit more controllable, but we do have shredders that shred really finely, and we don't like, because they're so little, like, we don't, we won't capture it in the recycle, but they also cause a lot of paper flying, and I have neighbors upset because their neighbor puts their shredding, and it's all over the place, and it makes a mess. So that's why, if you do want to recycle it, please put it in a paper bag in the recycle, or you could put it in your organics cart as a layering.
Any last questions? Other than that, we really appreciate you coming out, taking your time, we're real excited about the new services and rates, and, so let us know. Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
I have a trick, quick.
Oh, that's Glenda then, that's Glenda.
Of course, the best for last.
That's Glenda.
State of Brothers target department stores, banks, recyclable or trash?
Encourage you to reuse, and if you don't reuse it, then it'll be trash.
Thank you. That is correct. They can't actually recycle?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.